I'd like to call the City of Apache Junction Work Center, Work Session of July 14th, 2025 to order and ask everyone to put their cellphones on silent. Roll call, please.
Mayor Wilson.
Here.
Vice Mayor Schroeder.
Present.
Councilmember Cross.
Here.
Councilmember Heck.
Here.
Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Nesser.
Present.
Councilmember Soller.
Here.
You have a quorum, Your Honor.
Thank you. Presentation and discussion of case number P-25-10-GPA. Nicholas.
Your Honor, thank you. And I also, I believe they're listed as two separate items.
Yes. You want to combine the two of them?
Yes. So this is the Major General Plan Amendment and the rezoning for Sunt Construction, as both of them essentially go hand in hand. So to note their request, Sunt Construction is requesting a major general plan amendment of 36.6 net acres from commercial to light industrial/business park and industrial, and a rezoning from RSGR, general rural low-density single-family detached residential, to industrial by plan development, in order to permit the construction of a construction manufacturing facility. It also has training office facilities in order to be able to support their business nationwide. As noted, the current zoning of this property is RSGR. It is a residential zoning, but that is mostly just because this property has never been developed. These kinds of low-density residential zonings are sometimes used for these massive state land properties or other properties like this that have just never been developed, never been utilized, and were originally parceled off and sold in just these huge chunks. It is surrounded to the west and to the south by other industrial properties. We have a county industrial island to the south, and then there's the baseline industrial park immediately to the west. To the east, we have RV Park, and we also have the Horn Auto Center properties, which are zoned general commercial by plan development. Now, Horn is the current property owner. They're selling it to Sunt, and they've indicated that they didn't have plans to develop this site themselves. It is noted on the general land, general plan land use map that this property was designated for commercial purposes. It is within the US-60 corridor. So, in this case, it is surrounded by other industrial uses as well, and it still achieves the general plan goals of providing these employment opportunities of providing economic development. And for reasons that I will note later in the presentation, we find that it supports the general plan and that this land use change is warranted by our general plan goals. Shown here is a site plan of the property. Right now, although they are developing, although they are rezoning 36.6 net acres, the subject site that they are planning on developing in this first phase is only approximately over nine acres, just shy of 10 acres. And it will have this industrial building. Within this building, they'll have manufacturing facilities, they'll have their offices, and they'll have training facilities. And we have worked with them to make sure that things are, that the site itself is buffered with landscaping and that they're providing all the necessary improvements to the site. We have also worked with their architectural team in order to make sure that this building is appealing as much as an industrial building can be typically. There, it's a big building, and as we worked with them to break up the massing, we helped, we worked with their team to introduce elements along the windows and along the lower part of the building, break up the visual massing. I will note that the west side of the building is something that they have, they expect future expansion of the building. Later on, they'll be able to pop out those tilt-up panels and be able to expand further to the west, at which point they have noted that they will incorporate some of these more finer architectural features along the future west side of the building. But as of yet, we don't have any plans for that in hand, and that will come in due time once they get settled. As this is a major general plan amendment, there were increased notification requirements. They, we worked with them, and we had to notify nearby municipalities that had a much larger notification requirement, two months of this extra agency review. And as part of that, there is also the industrial notification requirements with a larger increased radius as we sent mailings out to neighbors and involved them in the neighborhood meeting. But in that neighborhood meeting on March 19th, we just had one neighbor, a neighboring business owner, attend, and they expressed support for the development and the rezoning. We then proposed this case to the Planning and Zoning Commission twice, per the major general plan amendment requirements. And on June 24th, they voted 5-0 to recommend the approval of the major general plan amendment, P-25-10-GPA, and the rezoning by plan development, P-25-11-PZ, subject to the conditions of approval found in the staff report. So as noted, we believe that this proposal, the major general plan amendment and the rezoning by plan development, comply with our general plan goals. Our general plan, especially within the economic development section, identify key goals, including providing this kind of employment opportunity along the US-60 corridor, and using these infill sites strategically in order to provide more jobs for the community. And Sunt has noted that they expect to provide around 100 jobs. And with that, our economic development director also has a few slides that he would like to share. I will note that the public hearing on this item is tomorrow, Tuesday, July 15th. And with that, I would like to turn the time over to Ryan, and I will be available right after.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Just a few slides here. This is a project that the entire community should be very excited about, and I wanted to provide some additional context demonstrating why. So first off, on our industrial market, again, where we are right now. So our vacancy rate is 3.5 percent. The region-wide industrial vacancy rate is over 10 percent. So that's a strong positive, showing that the buildings that we have are filled, and that companies, that there's demand from industrial companies to be here. Now, on an opportunity for improvement, just to level set on where we are from an industrial standpoint, the Queen Creek number there does include the LG Building, just to make sure I mention that. But you can see Queen Creek, three times our inventory, Gilbert 20 times, and Mesa 80. But we're just starting this process of bringing more industrial, and we really need to be focused on bringing more of these industrial jobs. Just for some additional background on what these jobs in general look like these days, there's kind of an older preconception of kind of these dirty, loud industrial environments. That's not what the majority of all the new industrial jobs that are coming to the region are. These are clean jobs, they're safe jobs, and the salaries that they bring, whether it's industrial office, pay a lot higher than retail jobs. It's always important to remember that. Now, that's not to say we don't want to bring more retail too. We all know that that's a big focus of what economic development is working on in the entire city, and projects like this give us the opportunity to bring the retail sooner because we have that disposable income with the type of jobs that these provide. And then finally, just the last slide here to see these numbers, this would be the largest industrial building in Apache Junction. And also, we have not had, until WW Clyde last month, we have not had a new industrial building in over 10 years. So this is some big momentum for us. WW Clyde last month, and now Sunt coming to City Council for review, and they have mentioned, and maybe they can provide some more color on it tomorrow when the applicant can speak. They've mentioned late 2025 is a potential groundbreaking. Maybe they can provide some more color tomorrow. But economic development is really excited about this project, and I'm glad to answer any questions you might have.
I have a couple.
Yes.
What are they going to be manufacturing?
Yeah, and so I'll let them talk in a little bit more color about that tomorrow. There's initially, my understanding is some different pipe manufacturing, but they're going to be doing a lot of the off-site for different construction projects that they have throughout the valley. They'll be doing some of that work within the building, and there's additional expansion opportunities to move into some other submarkets of the manufacturing for their construction projects.
Do we know how much there is of a split between, I saw, office space and then the manufacturing when you were talking about the jobs?
Yeah. So they can get a little bit more granular again tomorrow, but I can tell you, thanks for bringing that up, Councilmember Johnson, this is a particularly high office buildout within an industrial building. So there's 10,000 square feet of office in a 65,000 square foot building. So typically, a building of this size would only have about 2,000 square feet. So that gets me excited when the office number goes up, because that's more jobs and it's more density of jobs. A lot of times, that'll be about five jobs per thousand square feet of office. They have mentioned with this office space, and this part is really cool, is that they will be doing some of the training for their Sunt employees throughout the whole region coming to Apache Junction. So very similar to with WW Clyde, they're doing a similar thing here. That office buildout will bring employees from throughout the region to come to this Apache Junction building to do some of their training.
Okay, and is there going to be any outside storage of the items that they manufacture?
I believe there will be some, but...
Your Honor, Councilmember Johnson, we have worked with them, and they've noted that they will not have outdoor storage, but there may be some aspect of loading it onto their trucks that may be visible. And so we have worked with them in order to have, like, I believe it's an eight-foot wall on the north side, and other screening in order, if there's anything on, like, trucks or anything like that. But there is no spaces for outdoor storage. We've worked with them to make sure that, we had questions about the way they had labeled things on their site plan, and confirmed in advance that there wouldn't be outdoor storage of just a pileup of their materials.
Yeah, that was the question our rule was trying to get to. Thank you.
Anyone else? A few?
Yes.
Regarding the north, you said that they're planning on putting a wall on the north side?
Yes, that is correct.
North side's the freeway. And I also noticed that you're requiring them to put in, you know, larger box-sized landscape trees for that. I mean, to me, I would think that you would want it to screen more of the existing neighborhood versus the freeway. I mean, when I drive by it, I want to see a nice-looking building. I don't want to see, look through it through the trees, plus the freeway's elevated. Are we making, you know, are we spending a lot of, or are they spending a lot of money on a wall and high-end trees when the 60 is, what, 20 feet higher? Doesn't make sense in that respect. But I guess if that's what they agreed to, but I would be more inclined to just let them put, you know, 15-gallon trees long there. And I guess another thought would be is the south portion of the property that they're not developing, but is on the map as future use. I'd like to see them put either 10 or 15-gallon trees, the full length of that, and all the way down to the far southeast corner, so that when that does get developed, those trees will be mature and kind of block things off. Just some thoughts.
Thank you, Your Honor. Councilmember Cross, I believe if you would like, these items could be noted tomorrow when making a motion. All of the recommended conditions of approval are just that, recommendations that are at your liberty to tweak or adjust.
Also, along the auto drive or auto center road drive, the, that whole stretch through there, I would like to see that mandatory 25 mile an hour, and also signage along it saying no air brakes on semis coming in and out. Help protect the residents in the trailer park.
I believe that would be something we would have to work with Public Works. Some of questions came up during the Planning and Zoning Commission regarding them adding things to auto center drive, and since it gets further off-site from their developed area and pertaining to the signage on the road, we would need to coordinate that with Public Works. But that's certainly something that can be looked into. Also, Sydney had reminded me, the wall and the trees were noted as a requirement from the zoning ordinance of, in terms of where they needed to be. And that's part of what put them on the north side, just because the, technically speaking, the US-60 is considered a street, and just in terms of frontage, and it triggered just a, the wall and tree requirement there. So, and what a shame. Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Yeah. Anyone else over here have questions?
Trees on the north side, they'll help cut down the noise for their own building. That'll actually help reduce the freeway noise.
There won't be any noise.
Okay. So it's going to be at tomorrow's meeting? Is the public hearing on this?
Not tonight, as a work session.
Yeah, but tomorrow.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. I misheard you. The public hearing will be tomorrow.
Okay. All right. Presentation, discussion, and proposed P-25-28-CUP. Nicholas.
Hello again, and thank you, Your Honor. P-25-28-CUP is a proposed conditional use permit, and in this case, it'll be the first of this type that we've taken to the City Council since we had the text amendment, I believe in February, and when it was approved earlier this year. The apartments that were recently heard by the City Council were an appeal, so it went through a slightly different process. But this is the first conditional use permit project that has triggered the new requirement to be seen and receive final approval by the City Council. In this case, P-25-28-CUP is a request to authorize the operation of an event center and venue at this parcel, APN 100-25-043E, which is at the southeast corner of Apache Trail and Lost Dutchman Boulevard. The property is currently zoned B1, which is general commercial, which allows these event centers by conditional use permit authorization. We found in terms of the different use categories, it is something that aligns with the general purpose of general commercial uses. But as there are things like traffic and noise impacts, it is something that deserves council review and approval. And that is why it was one of the items that had been adjusted in the amendment and why it is now being brought to you tonight. The property has commercial immediately to the north and across Apache Trail, while it has residential land uses to the south, east, and west. Provided here is a site plan. The applicant at this time has noted that they are only planning on developing the west half of this nearly five-acre parcel. Currently, it is used as a RV and boat storage yard. And with this, they plan on still keeping some of the existing use on the east side of the property, but they do plan on developing this west half with a event venue. Shown here are the elevations of the property. The applicant has provided a picture tonight, which was just inserted onto your desk as a more conceptual rendering of where it's, where this kind of architecture has been seen elsewhere. Noted here is the floor plan. The building is just shy of 5,000 square feet. It is 4,927 square feet. It mostly open space in order to accommodate seating and in order to accommodate indoor events, while you have other facilities like prep kitchens and bridal rooms and bathrooms as required, of course. And then, let me back up to the site plan. There is an outdoor area that could be used for outdoor events as necessary. In this case, the applicant has complied with the public notification requirements with the sign posting, mail notification, and newspaper posting. A neighborhood meeting was held at the Apache Junction Multi-Generational Center Tuesday, June 10th. One neighbor attended in this case, and staff have received two emails expressing opposition out of concern for traffic and noise. One of those neighbors had attended the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting and reiterated those concerns. And, but on June 24th, the Planning and Zoning Commission voted 5-0 to recommend the approval of P-25-28-CUP, subject to the conditions of approval found in the staff report delivered to you tonight. Thank you. And for this case, the City Council public hearing will be held on Tuesday, August 5th, 2025. I'm happy to help in whatever way I can.
Yes.
Okay, I do have some questions. And first off, I'd like to say that I was the person that was at the public neighborhood meeting, and I just want to put it on the record that I specifically asked a question whether there would be any outside amplified sound and was told no. But before I get to that, in this item, there is something that I'm concerned by, and I'd like to get an explanation. I don't know how this works. But there was, on page six, the question of unique nature of the property, use and/or development's physical characteristics. And the applicant answer is what is confusing to me, and I'd like to end up with some kind of idea on what this really means. The property is minimal, street-fronted, so instead of outfitting East Apache Trail with a new driveway access point, the existing driveway will be used to offer intermingling of the existing and new functions. Existing and new site facilities will be shared and create a campus experience versus isolated functions. First off, I am all for having an event venue, but I'm confused by this, because we have two different properties, and what I understand should be two different businesses. So how does that work, that it's a shared thing because one has kitchen and alcohol and the other does not? How is this a, is it shared? Is it separate? Which way does that actually go? Because I know the liquor license is at the other business.
Thank you. Thank you for the question, Your Honor. Councilmember Johnson, our understanding of that is that, well, first, let me note that when it comes to the parking and driveway, when it comes to shared parking and shared driveways, our zoning ordinance has different allowances just to allow businesses in general to be able to use shared parking facilities, coordination in times, and that kind of aspect. And the applicant has noted in this case, with the different parking spaces that they have available on site, they would like to be able to coordinate that themselves and kind of plan and program when the parking would be used. In that case, shared parking facilities, shared driveway facilities in that case. Our understanding of the uses, though, is that they will be two separate and distinct businesses. I may have to defer to others. When it comes to the liquor license requirements, our understanding is that they would need their own liquor license as a separate entity and as a separate parcel. But I tried calling the Board of Liquor to get further clarification, and unfortunately, was not able to get an answer at this time. So I hope to have that in greater detail for the next meeting. But we'll also work with the applicant to make sure that those items are further clarified.
Yes, because I love the idea of the one driveway, because, you know, people are used to it and everything else, and that would be a great way to be able to come in and go to both places. But I was concerned about, you know, if you have two different liquor licenses, then you can't walk around with drinks between the two. But there are two conditions that are on here that I would like to address, and I would also like to have the rest of the council members give an opinion on at least these two. In the site plan, there is, it is clearly listed that there is a new six-foot-tall vinyl fence, maybe not yours, but the one that's in the packet, six-foot vinyl fence on the east side of this area that's being developed to shield it from, so people that are there aren't going to be looking at the storage facility. And on condition number three, we have listed the six-foot-tall opaque fence shall be constructed along the south and western borders, and I don't understand why the words from the site plan are not in here for the east fence.
Your Honor, Councilmember Johnson, that is something we can easily add in in terms of why it was not there. It was because it was shown on the site plan already, and in the case, there was a little bit more ambiguity about the south and west sides. But for the sake of consistency and making sure everything...
Yeah, if you're going to have three fences...
...that there were the offenses, we can tweak that condition of approval to be more clear.
Okay, that was, that was the one. And like I said, I'd like to hear from the other council members on these two items. The other one is the number five. And number five is about the outdoor music. As I said, I asked a specific question of the architect at the time and was told that there would, that because of, when you look at the rest of the diagrams, the stage is on the inside. So there is a stage area for music inside.
I apologize.
And with, and it says to prevent disturbances to the neighborhood. 400 feet away, after many years, they have two nights and 10 days. So I'm not sure why there should be outdoor music at a venue that we're seeing inside stage area. So I don't think that there should be outside amplified music at this site. That is not what was portrayed at the neighborhood meeting. And I would like to hear what the rest of the council has about the, those are the only two. Other than that, I think this is going to be one heck of a better-looking bit, item out there on that road. Because I think I understand from the diagram that the facade wall that's there on the south side, at least part of that would have to be removed, so you would have that pathway between the two. Is that not correct?
I believe some of it, yes. And Your Honor, Councilmember Johnson, if I may also note, when it comes to condition five...
Well, I understand why this, why planning and zoning, and everybody has to put things in.
I see.
I'm just asking about everybody's opinion regarding that particular item and why it cannot be no outdoor music when it is designed for an indoor event.
I'll start with the wall. Can you go back to the layout of the land? No, no, back, go back to the other photo.
Yes, sir.
The, this one. That one's fine. All these houses along the east side, they get noise. So how big of a, I don't know, how big of a fence is on the east side right now?
It's a six-foot chain-link fence.
Yeah.
And it sets, you know, six-foot tall. If you were to put an eight-foot wall there, block wall, it would still be lower than the roadbed, because the property line, the chain-link fence sets on the property line right now.
I mean, a wall would help stop some of the noise from going east, you know, but if the road's higher or lower, I guess, I'm just, I think if you're going to have three fences, you might as well do the east-side fence the same, not just have a chain-link. Unless, is there a view thing? Why they don't want to put a different type of fence in there?
Your Honor, Councilmember Soller, they have not specifically noted something at that time. I would have to defer to them in that case.
Okay, and that'll be tomorrow.
In the case of this item, the wedding venue will be heard by the City Council on Tuesday, August 5th.
Yeah, because, I don't know. What's everybody else think about the fence?
Well, I do believe you're looking at a fence at the far east side, and if you look at the diagram, it's just to the east of the venue, because that storage is still going to be there. So it's maybe, I don't know how many feet that is, from the outdoor ceremony area to the right of that, where you see that line. Can you move that up a little bit? Go back to the site plan. And if, if I'm correct, based on the other drawings that are in the packet, it's where you stop seeing the shaded area is where that six-foot fence is on the one that's in the site plan and the packet we received.
That is our understanding.
Because they'll have a gate there to continue into storage.
Yes.
So all that to the east of that is storage for RVs?
Yep.
Okay.
As far as the fence goes...
As far as the fence goes, six, eight, ten, twelve, chain-link, whatever it is, doesn't matter. If it's in the plans and if there's a line in the CUP that involves the fence, it should be the same as the plans. Period.
Or not be outdoor music. Make it look unified, nice. Instead of having chain-link, you're gonna have a nice fence there. So get rid of the chain-link, put that type of fence in.
The outdoor music. I feel like that could be, that could be a recipe that can impose some issues. But they are still bound by our noise ordinance. They still have to follow that. As far as the outdoor speakers, whether or not you say, okay, how about no outdoor speakers? If you have a wedding or an event that you roll out a portable speaker, and if that's permitted, then it would kind of play into the whole thing that no matter what was going on, you could just roll out an outdoor speaker. It's... I think it boils down to respect, and it makes the difference on being a good neighbor. And I feel like that if there are, if there are a place up the street that is gonna open up, that is allowing a live band, then who are we to say you can't have a speaker? So I would, I would hope that when this gets built and things start to unfold on this, that there is a level of mutual respect from the business and the neighbors. And I feel like there probably will be.
Your Honor.
Yes.
I don't know how to word this. This business that requires a CUP, does it specifically require in a CUP about amplified music or music at all? Or does it fall under the same rules our ordinances about like any restaurant can have music and outdoor bands and everything, places that serve food? Where does this... I mean, like I say, does it need a CUP? Or if they didn't get us... If in the CUP, it didn't specifically say anything and did not address amplified music or speakers or a hang, could they still put them up, just like any restaurant?
Your Honor, Councilmember Nessar, if I understand your question, I believe this kind of question has come up when we had our last wedding venue conditional use permit a few years ago. At that time, event venues did not require any sort of... If everything was inside, event venues did not require any sort of conditional use permit. And it was the outdoor music specifically that was noted as an impact that would require conditional use permit approval. Now, that specific line of code was, it wasn't exactly in the code like as a spelled-out condition. It was more just that when you have outdoor impacts, that is typically what requires the conditional use permit. In this case, it's reviewed holistically. Were you to prohibit outdoor music, that would be under your discretion as part of the conditional use permit approval, as part of a mitigation of an impact. But if nothing was said, then as long as they were complying with city noise ordinances, they would not be prohibited from having outdoor activity, outdoor music.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. So, yeah, kind of concerning the music. I know that that Lost Dutchman barbecue is fixing to open up pretty darn soon. And my understanding from them is that they have a grandfather clause in a outside stage and dance floor, and it's been there since the 90s. And when it was Phillies, we heard them on a regular basis, just about every Friday, Saturday night, sometimes Wednesday and Thursday nights, depending on, you know, the season. But I could hear them from my house. Was it over 60 decibels? No. But you could clearly hear the band. Usually every, all that stopped sometime between nine and 10 o'clock. You know, I... Just about every bar in our community, at some point in time, has amplified music. I'm assuming a lot of this would be, you know, you have the preacher up front and they start playing the wedding procession, and here comes the bride and comes walking down. That music would be amplified, maybe a couple songs during the ceremony. And then, you know, the reception is gonna probably be inside where the stage is and the dance floor is. That's how I look at it. You know, I don't, I don't see this being an outdoor concert venue. It appears that it's going to be mostly an indoor. But, you know, if I were to get married there, I'd love to have my ceremony outside with that, just million-dollar view of that mountain. Regarding the fence, I mean, it's gonna be a storage yard. You put, he could easily put the same white vinyl fence that he put up when he did the extension of his patio. It's a beautiful white vinyl fence, very well done, looks great. But like I said, the roadbed is almost two and a half feet, maybe three feet above the top of that six-foot chain-link fence. So if he puts, takes that chain-link right down right there and puts the same vinyl fence that he's gonna have all the way over here on the, you know, just to the east of the new building, what's it gonna accomplish? Pretty much nothing, other than...
Would it block the view of the RVs that are there?
No, because the roadbed's... I mean, it'd be like putting the fence right around here, and you're standing on the road, you're gonna see every vehicle out there. It won't block, it won't block anything. That's how I've looked at it, because I've driven, I drove by there. I go there. Everybody knows I go there on a... And you see the, you know, I see, I see the chain-link fence, and I'm wondering, you know, how could that get put up higher? And there's just no way. I mean, the property line from the shoulder is maybe, I'm gonna say, six to eight feet. And it's probably six foot of dirt, and then it drops right down to the chain-link fence. And that's where the property line is.
Someone's suggesting build this fence higher?
Like I said earlier, if, if we told him he had to put an eight-foot fence in, the eight-foot fence would barely be, it'd probably be just a little bit lower than the roadbed, than Cortez Road itself.
But that's, but the height is not, was in question, right?
Yeah, right. It's the view.
I think it's not in question.
But like I said, from standing on the road, whether it's a block wall, a vinyl fence, or a chain-link fence, you're gonna be able to see everything inside the storage yard. If you look all the way across to the other side, all the way to the west, that's where you're gonna see an actual beautiful vinyl fence with some landscape trees behind it and that building with the windows.
Your Honor, if I may make a note as well, part of the reason that it is a chain-link fence and why staff hasn't required any changes to it is because although it is that eastern half is slated to still be an RV and boat storage, the applicant has noted that they wish to phase it out and that there is future development planned. I don't, we don't know or have any plans on what that future development would be. But it is noted that the storage is not their long-term desire and that they are planning on developing that into something. And so the chain-link would take, we have viewed it as a temporary screen and that when future development comes in at that, on that east half, there would be, you know, future development requirements subject to whatever comes in and that we would get into the deeper details of requirements and screening and landscaping and fencing and all those things at that time. So at this point, that's why it is noted as a chain-link fence at least.
Your Honor. So two things. You know, just, just to be all-around fair about it, if the plans say they're there, then that's what should be there. Second, while we're talking about fences, the fence line that is being leased to the applicant that was on the right-of-way, what does this do to that? Because whatever it is, if it changes that agreement in any sort of way, we need to get in front of it right now because we don't need this hiccup down the road.
I'm not sure it changes the Fifth Amendment, if that's what you're asking. Because you were right, if it does, you'd have to amend that Fifth Amendment. So Nick, is there's nothing in this that would change the fence on the south side, correct, where the...
No, not torn off.
So I don't think it does change the Fifth Amendment.
So, okay, so that's not in jeopardy of any way, shape, or form with this project?
No, the lease would stay in place, if that's what you mean.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
I could see something happening in the storage lot, similar to what's happening currently at the Paseo over there at, over by the museum. How they're putting all those little casitas in for people that, when they come and get married and they have a place to change and a place to spend the night, people come from all over the country to get married at that place. And I could see maybe, you know, Mo and Tina doing something to that effect in the future. And something like that would really help block a lot of any sounds or issues going on in that parcel. Just a thought.
Peter.
Your Honor. Okay. Everybody else still?
Yeah. Sorry.
In terms of, in terms of fencing, we've talked about it enough, I'm not even gonna talk about it. In terms of the noise or the exterior sound, amplified sound, according to Bambi and officers telling me after it, the, in the meeting, she was told that there will be no outdoor amplification of noise. When they say that, it's a done deal, in my mind. When you say that, if you're saying that to get, to get past that meeting, but you have no intention of abiding by it, now it's a different story. But they said there'll be no outside amplified noise, that's it. So don't have to worry about it.
Your Honor, Councilmember Heck.
Mayor, Councilmember Sidney Rice, Development Services. What the applicant and the applicant team have noted to staff regarding outdoor noise is that there is not going to be any amplified music.
Could you speak up just a little?
Yes, sorry, I have a...
Microphone's acting up.
Yeah. Yeah, so what the applicant has noted during the development review process is that there wouldn't be any outdoor amplified music. Now, if noise is a concern, which it sounds like it is, it is council's discretion to make that a condition of approval, to not have any amplified sound at all, or if there is going to be any amplified sound, to limit it to the ceremony purposes only. And then any music that would be provided by the venue is to be indoor only. And, and so it is staff's understanding that we've reached a consensus with the applicant, that that's, that's what the programming is intended to accomplish and to mitigate those neighborhood concerns. However, those concerns could be clarified at the public hearing by the applicant and the applicant team. Now, regarding the fence, the fence is dual-purpose. So when the planning and zoning staff asks for a fence to be put in place, it mitigates unsightly views, right, and it also provides a sound buffer. And so one of the reasons that staff asked for the fence here in the middle of the property is because that will better deflect sound than the most eastern portion of the property here.
Yes.
So just a couple clarifying points. Sorry to interrupt, Mayor.
Yep, thank you. Well, you clarified the aspects on it, and that's something that I agree with in the aspect, both on the sound and the fencing, in the aspect on it, because, yes, if you're going to, you know, have a ceremony outside, that would be something that you'd want to be able to have everyone to be able to hear in that, I'll say, the venue that's there on it. And so, but that would only be for the ceremony in the aspects on it.
That would be, that would be my big understanding from my, from that conversation, and I made a point to go to that, was that I don't think anybody would have any issue with an amplification of the vowels and the, and the "here comes the bride," but nothing beyond that. And the fence, the fence that's on here is going to be the same fence, from what I understand, as the one that's on the extension now, which is an absolutely beautiful fence that they've done on the extension. And that will just cap that as a, as a setting. So I like the fence there. Whatever happens on Cortez would be up to whatever that turns out to be at some later date.
Some future.
Because Darrell is correct, that, that elevation is definitely lower. There is nothing over there that, that helps with sound. That's just pretty, and if you walked over there, you'd actually have to be street-level to actually not see it. I don't have any issues with the Cortez fence.
One, one other question, not, not related to noise or fence. Related to, they mentioned catering. I'm presuming that they'd be catering from the hitching post to this venue. My question is, like, would there, if, if someone that was reserving this venue, would they have the option to get an outside caterer to do this? Or would they have to utilize, have to utilize the hitching post? Again, you might not know that, that might be a question for later, but...
Your Honor, Councilmember Heck. Although I would defer that to the applicant, our understanding, though, is that it would be open as a, you know, if someone had their wedding team, they had their caterer, I don't believe there's any prohibition on that. None was indicated to us. But they, that's a specific operational question that I think the applicant may be able to get into better detail with.
Anyone else? Nope. Okay. I'll get my notes back here.
Thanks, Nick. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Presentation, discussion, resolution number 25-21. Yes?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Lieutenant Painter with the Police Department. I have, for your consideration, Governor's Office of Highway Safety and DUI Abatement Council grant. So the Police Department applies for these grants. Police Department applies for these grants every year. We have a long history of success with them. This grant is specifically to fund DUI enforcement overtime, so it's reimbursed. We applied for and were awarded $20,000 towards the DUI effort. So staff is just requesting approval to move forward and begin utilizing this grant award. That's it. Thank you.
Asking permission to spend money.
Money and...
Asking estate's money.
Yeah. Permission to receive.
It's a pass-through.
Already received it, now just permission to spend what you have received, yes.
No questions.
No questions? Thank you. And when's that coming up for?
We got it for consent tomorrow?
I don't remember offhand. Do you know when it's up for people?
Seth, do you know if it's on?
Tomorrow or two weeks?
I think it's tomorrow.
I think it's tomorrow.
Tomorrow on consent.
Tomorrow? Oh, okay. Add it to all the others, all right?
Yeah, we got a lot.
Okay. Excuse me. Presentation, discussion, First Amendment with Primary Construction and Company.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Dave Butler, Parks Superintendent for the Parks and Recreation Department, and I am presenting tonight on a contract amendment for our drainage revision project at Prospector Park. Just a real quick slide here to show you, to remind everyone that this is the area where the work will be taking place. We have some drainage issues out there, and we've been working on this for a while. This project has had a, several delays during the engineering, floodplain review, product submittal. Everything completely unrelated to the contractor's performance, we've just run into several delays through the process. Now, we've received all of the product submittals, everything's been approved. However, because of the delays through engineering and floodplain issues, material delivery was delayed. delayed. At this time, an amendment to the contract term is necessary to make up for some of these delays. The one thing I do want to point out, and I think is really important, is that we've worked with the contractor, and there is no increase to the original bid amount or contract amount, even with all of the engineering changes and revisions that have been made since the bid went out, same price that they bid a while back. So staff does recommend amending the term end date of the contract from July 31st, 2025 to October 31st, 2025, allowing enough time to complete all the construction and then any follow-up punchless items that we may have. I do want to point out that this, we typically want to wait two weeks, but because of the short timeframe, we will bring this back tomorrow night on consent, unless you have any questions or concerns for me this evening.
Any questions?
Kind of.
Kind of?
Yeah. If it gets, if it's getting delayed all the way to October, we have a lot of winter visitors and people that use the horse facility down at the end of that street.
Yep.
Are they gonna have it closed off? Would there be a way to get around it?
Yeah, so the, we extended the contract through October 31st to allow time for punchless. The actual construction timeline, we're in construction now, and we anticipate being done early September. That additional time was to allow for punchless items, if, you know, there's a few things here and there that we just need to wrap up. The one thing I will point out on here is, all of the work that takes place in the north is mostly grading and is not going to affect this roadway at all, so this will be wide-open access the entire time. As we go through construction sequencing, this walkway will be impacted, as will this walkway here. It will not impact any of the access to the multipurpose fields or any of the fields as we still will be able to come in from the north or the west. The biggest impact will be these two walkways on the south and east side there. I hope, I hope that answered the question.
Yeah, it absolutely does. Thank you.
Anyone else? Nope. All right, it's going to be tomorrow night.
It'll be tomorrow, yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Get my glasses back on again. Presentation, discussion on Public Works fiscal year 2026 capital improvement and street maintenance plan. Shane.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. Shane Kiesel, your Public Works Deputy Director, and yes, I'll be up front, I'm here for permission to spend a lot of money, so I'll just let that be known right at the start. So again, I'm before you this time of the year, again, to review our Public Works capital improvement as well of our streets maintenance plan that we have planned for fiscal year 26, so. So again, this is informative presentation, opportunity for you to learn about those projects that we're looking at in our plan this year to, to get done. In this presentation, I have some pictures and stuff, pictures of projects that we just performed this last fiscal year, so it's my chance to show you back, hey, some of the pictures, remind you some of the projects that we got done in this last fiscal year's project, so. So with that, we'll be, move on. My first goal is to give an update on our street inventory. Our streets are our largest fiscal asset in the city that we maintain, we manage, so I think it's very important that I give you an overview of the health of that largest inventory, that largest asset that we have for the city. And then I'll start getting into our fiscal year 26, into the specific projects that we look to complete in the fiscal year, a little bit of a scope of those projects, as well as rough timeframes as we move forward. I'll give my disclaimer here now, this is a plan. All plans have certain obstacles, challenges too, so there are some projects that we may discuss or mention tonight, that if bids, quotes come in over than what we have budgeted, sometimes those projects do get kicked out to another fiscal year, so. So again, this is our plan, this is our task before us that we're going to try to achieve within the budget monies that we have and the timeframes that we are given, allowed. This first picture is Palm Wash, this is a recent drainage project right alongside 16th Avenue and Palm Wash, in between Ironwood and Delaware, just completed up here in June. It's a wash that had significant erosion problems, also some safety issues related to some of the pathways, as well as the sidewalks that the adjacent charter school used to actually cross the wash over to the green space on the, on the west side of the wash. So this project is done, so if you want to go out and take a drive-by, definitely a night and day difference from what was there to, to what is there now, so. So I actually have to say I'm a little bit anxious for some rain, to get some of these structures tested that we've been doing for the last couple of years, and I say that heartedly, as long as the rain comes slowly. All right, just again, a reminder, we, we base our condition assessment of our streets on a remaining service life, an RSL. So if a road is in real bad shape, there's a picture that I took bef, pre-project, that we did this last year within the Haven Hollow subdivision, so that's a community just west of Delaware, south of Superstition, north of Apache Trail. So the roads in this subdivision, we've been paving, reconstructing, as well as adding some civil improvements, curb gutter sidewalks in some portions. So that picture is a great example of a road with the RSL of zero, so those are roads that are all cracked up, you could definitely identify it, oftentimes you could feel it with the potholes. And then after we get done reconstructing, that RSL then is back up to 20. The 20 number could signify a road with a life of 20 years. Oftentimes, the roads can be extended a lot longer than that, about double that time, up to 40 years, if you do the right maintenance at the right time. So again, I can't speak that enough, that, how important street maintenance is, is because doing maintenance is a lot less, is much more convenient for travelers, as well as adjacent businesses and residents, to tolerate than it is completely ripping up a street and reconstructing a street, which might take it down for weeks, possibly months on end, so that's why maintenance, again, is much more convenient to all road users before we get to reconstruction. So again, we completed a couple of roads within the Haven Hollow subdivision, included some drainage structures within that area here this last fiscal year. Our street inventory condition, so there's two key performance indicators that we usually use for our pavement conditions. I'm very happy to report that our current RSL average went up from last year, from 12.82 to 14.05. We actually achieved our service level objective. That's the first time in 20 years that I've been here we've actually achieved that, so I think that's a good kudos to the investment that we have made in our streets, as well as Pinellas County with extending their sales tax for, for maintaining our streets. However, the second key performance indicator is, is keeping pavements that are in poor shape less than 5%. So we were at 5.8 last year of roads that were in bad shape, total in our inventory, up to 7%. So again, we don't want that percentage to be too high, because now we're spending $60 plus a square yard versus $3 or so a square yard when we're maintaining it. So we could be using all of our maintenance for reconstruction, so that's why we try to make sure we manage that number inventory at that 5% or, or lower. So we do have some room for improvement with some of those worst-case scenario streets that we still have in our inventory moving forward. And again, I've mentioned this before in the past, we need about 2.5 million for our maintenance program with our streets. Currently, we have funded about 2, 2 million with our street sales tax monies that we have, but also we use, have been using HERF as well as the Pinellas County sales tax money to supplement the street sales tax we have to get that 2.5 million that we need, and not counting that reconstruction money for those roads that are in poor, that need to be completely reconstructed. That's where we oftentimes use that Pinellas County sales tax for, is for those reconstruction-type projects. Again, there's another picture on there, and that's a chip seal operation, so we do a lot of chip seal preservation maintenance out in our rural areas of our, of our communities, so that is a picture that was just recently done in, in April. We look to do, again, another 12, 15 lane miles or so we do each year when it comes to just chip seal, and that is a project that we do in-house. A lot of the other maintenance we do, when it comes to preservation treatments, we contract, but chip seal, definitely we are able to do it in-house, and along with a lot of the crack sealing that we do, as well of our, as included as our maintenance plan. So I know you can't read the streets on this, but again, when we see color, I just want to show that to you, that, hey, we have a lot of projects, a lot of square yardage, a lot of streets we have planned to hit this year. I will get this in a digital format for, for, for council and forward that to you. I meant to add it into our agenda item, but I, I missed, forgot to do that, so I will get this to you, because I usually like you to have this, so as we move through the, through the fiscal year, when I bring these contracts before council, you can pair up the contract to the project and have this map for your reference in the future for those locations of, of work that we are doing. Also, what's unique this year in the first is we had a north part of town, and now we have a southern part of town. So this is the master plan community down south, consisting of the Radiant subdivision and the Blossom Rock, our newest, larger residential communities down south. Some of these development units or divisions within, within the subdivision, we have accepted and have been part of our inventory now for about a year. Usually pavement after its first year, after it's been constructed or paved, you have to start doing the maintenance, so we're going to be starting to do some fog seals down in that community this next year. And over the next few years, you will see multiple phases as we start hitting the rest of those streets within that, within that community. Fiscal year, street maintenance plan, getting a little bit more into specifics of preservation maintenance, as I mentioned, we do a lot of crack seal in-house, very busy for our in-house crews during that fall through the winter timeframe. We usually try to do it in the winter when the pavement contracts, when it gets cold, pavement actually contracts, in the summertime, pavement actually expands, just like concrete does, and that's when you'll start seeing, for example, the concrete sidewalks starting to pop, go vertical, because they're expanding, so pavement does the same thing. We try to hit the cracks at their largest point, so that's why we do the crack sealing within that winter timeframe. Fog sealing, we have quite a bit of fog sealing down south, as I just showed you in the previous map, this next year, so we are looking at prob, trying to do that here this fall, 2025. If not, I try to hit that spring window when temperatures are in that mid-range, not too cold, but not getting too hot, so a lot of our preservation maintenance are either in that window in the fall, or that window of a few months in the, in the spring. Also, we do have a significant portion of slurry seal for our square yardage that we're looking to touch this year too. We'll probably be splitting that into, into both windows in the fall, as well as in the spring, because one of the slurry seal areas includes a CAPE seal, and a CAPE seal is a multi-layer preservation system, usually consists of a chip seal layer with a slurry seal layer over the top. That extra layer adds flexibility and actually seals up the pavement really nice and lasts for a long period of time, so that's what a CAPE seal is. We've done some CAPE seals in the past, but it's not our main toolbox in the toolbox, so just wanted to give you a little bit more of an explanation of what that entails. And again, chip seal, we'll be shooting for that spring, probably around April 2026, again, to continue the chip seal and preservation that we do in our rural roads, usually in the north part and east parts of the, of the city. Oops, wrong button there. There we go. So rehabilitation, usually referred to as a pavement overlay, we have been doing quite a bit of overlays starting last year. We did a portion of Broadway, we did a portion of North Ironwood, look to continue that with Broadway, with doing the portion from Meridian to Ironwood. And then also, we look to do the whole, pretty much the whole length of Superstition Boulevard from Meridian all the way to SR 88 or North Apache Trail. If you've driven portions of that, you could tell, it's, there's chuck holes or potholes starting to develop. We have done a lot of preservation maintenance with those streets over the years since they were first constructed in the late 90s, so here they lasted a good 25, 30 years, probably faced some of the largest traffic volumes, truck volumes, we have in the city, so they are at that point of needing a rehabilitation, and hopefully we get them to last another 10, 15 years before we have to do anything more significant, any type of reconstruction or further rehabilitation at that time. Also, we're looking to try to get a overlay, inlay with Auto Center Drive and Cactus, this is what I call a slip project. It's a project that I'm trying to fit in, if our monies allow it, but again, as I mentioned at the start of this presentation, my disclaimer, sometimes bids, quotes come in higher, so some projects need to be slipped, and that's why I call it a slip project, it might have to slip into next year in case we don't have the funds to do it, but. Again, Auto Center Drive and Cactus are roads we actually discussed tonight with the Sunt construct, development project, so those roads definitely are part of our inventory and need some attention. Reconstruction loss Dutchman Phase 4, over the last few years, we've been doing different phases for the reconstruction of lost Dutchman. Phase 4 was on our fiscal year 25 plan last year, but got pushed to this year because of some right-of-way challenges, delays that we had with, with additional right-of-way that we're trying to get from state lands, because we're looking to, again, reconstruct the road, but then also widen it to actually add some bike lanes, so we have a long sliver of right-of-way that we need on that north side of Lost Dutchman, so that's the reason why we pushed back this project. So we're shooting for that fall/winter 25, 26 for this project, and I will complete essentially four phases of the Lost Dutchman reconstruction, all the way from Meridian all the way to North Apache Trail. Some other capital improvement projects, so these are related to streets, but also related to some drainage projects that we have, or street lighting, other facilities that we have with Public Works. Many of you know about the street, current street lighting project that has been going on for the last few months along Superstition Boulevard and Apache Trail. Most of them are all standing up there, I just got into town from a couple of weeks' vacation, drove them, wow, look at those, nice. Most of those lights are not energized yet, so we're just waiting for SRP to make their connection, to get them energized, but that project should be finishing up here real soon, and I can't wait to drive it at night, see what impacts we have with lighting up those corridors where we've had some, we say incidence pedestrians getting hit, so that was one of the precedents when it came with the grant monies that we got for that project, to add that element of safety along those corridors where we, where we have a lot of pedestrian traffic. Winchester Storm Drain Extension, that's another CIP project that's been in the work for the last couple of months, it's spilling over into this fiscal year, and I think we're on target to finish in that August timeframe. So again, we've had a lot of impacts to Southern Avenue right there at Winchester with extending that storm drain from north of Southern to the south side, which includes the widening of Winchester from the two, you know, single north-south through lanes to three lanes, where we'll have a shared third lane for, for left turns. So excited to get that project done, get rid of that open ditch that we had, which was a challenge to maintain in a sight, you know, a bad sight to be seen oftentimes when it wasn't being maintained. Also, we look to finish the Delaware Drive Improvement Project, so again, that's another open ditch that we're going to be gladly taking out of our inventory of, of maintenance that took a lot of resources to maintain, so we're undergrounding that water into a storm drain system and also widening that, adding an additional lane to match the, the cross-section of Delaware to the north, as well as to the south, so we'll have a continuous roadway with a consistent cross-section along Delaware. And then also Old West Highways, I know we've had some Public Works project managers talking to you, because we went out to bid for this project many times in the last year, maybe two. We're going to try to bid, get, put this out up to bid one more time here very soon, so there might be a likelihood if we get a good bid, we get some bidders on this project for possibly happening in that spring/summer 2026. And just a reminder, those will be some sidewalk along Old West Highway that makes some connectivity all the way from Idaho, will connect with the CAC, going to some points, east connecting some new subdivisions, you know, that we have to the, have to the east towards the end of Goldfield, Old West Highway down there, so it'll be a nice connectivity, again, for that pedestrian track, traffic, the student traffic, for those folks to get up into our downtown, downtown area. East Palm Springs subdivision, we've tried in some curb, we've started curb and gutter improvements in that subdivision many years ago, and we have a few streets that we still haven't gotten, so we finally found some room within our CIP plan to get back in there, hopefully complete that subdivision. Also have another curb gutter sidewalk improvement on a portion of Southern there between Meridian and Delaware on the north side, along Meridian Manor that was developed, but no sidewalk on that north side of Southern, so that's another project too, similar to this, a smaller project, but valuable project when it comes to, again, our vulnerable users, our pedestrians, bicyclists that, that need to also use our right-of-way. Capital improvements here continue, these are some of the major designs, I won't talk much about Weeks Wash, a lot of you have been kept up to speed on Weeks, Weeks Wash, so we've made some definitely monumental progress, big steps with that, with, with acquiring some land from state lands, however, we need some land yet, make some agreements with the Bureau of Land Management there for additional land, also SRP has a... Also, SRP has a transmission right-of-way in there, so we still have some parties here. We still got to work out the right-of-way and then hopefully, boom, get going with the design, being that the clock is ticking with some of the grant monies that we have lined up for that project. Another design study that, that started in fiscal year 25 is our fiber optic master plan. So fiber has come a long way with the city here just within the last year or two, meaning our own efforts as a city with putting our own fiber in the ground, but also a lot of telecommunication companies coming into the city looking to deploy fiber. So we really do not have any specification details in how we want things to be constructed with fiber. So the study was to help us put a master plan together as well as flesh out specifications and details when it comes to what we want and what we want to see of other companies when they deploy fiber within the community. So we look to continue marching forward on that in the next couple of months and get that into, get it, get that into place and get those standards in place that we've been needing to have in place. Also, exciting, a new traffic signal at Delaware and Southern. Designing, design is finishing up on that, so we look to finish that here as, as fiscal year 26 begins. Hopefully, we'll finish the design, they'll, they'll set us, set us, set this up for possible construction next fiscal year or the next fiscal year after. This is an intersection that currently has stop signs. It has met the warrants for a signal. So we're trying to make all efforts to fit it in our CIP planning, the monies to get a signal there at that intersection. Design master plan for Public Works. So this is a design master planning effort that was started this last fiscal year. So we're excited to continue that into fiscal year 26. Many of you guys have been down at Public Works. You guys, I think, have known our challenges with, with space. So we look to continue that forward, just plan for the future. We are growing. We put quite a few lane miles of streets on just within the last couple of years, mainly with our developments down south. So when we add facilities, Public Works facilities, 115 new streetlights, for example, with the streetlight project we just talked about, we need more staff, need more space, need more yard space for laydown of that equipment and materials that we use to do our, do our job. All right, bouncing around here possibly and trying to keep track of where I'm at. Sidewalk installation, so another sidewalk installation, this would be around the Superstition Basin. So we installed that Superstition Basin for flood control purposes. However, we do not really have a connectivity of a sidewalk for, for a portion of East Superstition Boulevard to get over to Idaho around that basin along North, North Apache Trail SR-888. So we're looking to work with ADOT, put a design together, also work with ADOT to get some type of connectivity with sidewalk there, which will help with traffic, pedestrian traffic, bicycle traffic on East Superstition to get to points to our downtown areas. And then lastly, update to our engineering standards. Again, I just talked a lot about the fiber optics, so a big part of updating our engineering standards is our telecommunications standards when it comes to fiber optics, as well, as well as small wireless facilities, types of facilities, telecommunications to, to better our cellular service within the city, which has eroded over the last few years, over time. And that erosion is caused by increases of population, people using wireless cell, cellphones. So it's a lot of telecommunication folks who want to come into the city to employ some more facilities to increase and boost our cellular coverage that we have in the city up in the north, but then also to the south as well. And our engineering standards, too, a lot of existing updates for streetlights, traffic signals, a lot of things have evolved very quickly in the last few years. So very excited to get those standards up to, up to speed, especially in light of more development coming, the better, less problems we're going to have in the future, the sooner we get those standards in place. All right, I think I talked pretty quick, so if you have any questions, I'll open up to questions. This is a picture, too, of a project that just finished up this last month on, on our Apache Trail medians with the curb. We're on phase five, so this is a project that we've done over many years. This is the last phase from Meridian all the way to Idaho. So definitely, council, be proud about that project. That's taken, been a long time, and with your support, with your finance, finances, with our budgeting, we'll be able to get that project. And it's such a great amenity, such a great beautiful attraction, I think, for the city along the Apache Trail. And we have one little portion of a median that we still have to get done in fiscal year 26 because we had a conflict with the ADOT project that's going west of Meridian. So when I say we're almost done or done, we're not, we're very close, but it's only about 500 feet of curb that we need to do yet in that, that median. I'll open it up, any questions?
Any questions?
Thoughts?
Yes.
I have two questions, Shane. First is a curiosity question is, we do a lot of sidewalk curb repair, whatever. So if we do, if we have the knowledge and the personnel, why are we not doing Old West Highway ourself? You said, you know, that went out for bid and it was unsuccessful. Why, why can't we just do it in-house?
Councilmember, yes, sir, maybe I misspoke. Those projects that we have are going to be done by contract, by contractor. So we do not do flat concrete work in-house. You might see us doing out some concrete, but it's usually footings for signs and stuff. So we, we, we do not do sidewalks or.
Okay, so even smaller jobs are all contracted?
Correct.
Okay.
Even with sidewalk panels that are popped or whatever, oftentimes, we just try to mitigate the hazard and then wait till we have a group of those projects in different areas to clump together, to have a contractor come out and do multiple sites, you know, taking advantage of economy of scale.
Okay. The other is, believe it or not, the, the new lights on Superstition, I got a complaint this week, somebody saying, why in the hell they put up so many lights on Superstition? You know, you can't win for losing. So I didn't have an answer for this person, so can you educate me? How, who and how is it determined how many lights are put up on a street?
Yeah, the amount of lumens, so we do have certain standards out there for the amount of lumens or the, you know, intensity of light. So there is a standard out there that you want for when it comes to pedestrian traffic. So these lights, though, are special, too, so they're, they are dark sky compliant, they are LED. And also, we do have modular nodes on streetlights, too, that actually give us the remote capabilities with dampening the light or programming the light for certain times in the night where they'll be on a little bit stronger, but then they dim down, for example, later or early mornings of, of the night. So we are taking advantage of some of the best technology out there to, again, mitigate some of those concerns of light pollution or bleeding off onto private properties.
Okay.
It's a good question and a good concern. One of the biggest contentious subjects in Public Works I've had in 20 years is, you could go to a neighborhood meeting and half the crowd is saying, yes, they want streetlights, and the other half of the crowd knowing.
Well, I try to explain to people that dark sky doesn't mean no lights, you know? And the concept of shielding lights and containing it and, like you say, the lumens and all that, and then you just get blank stares, you know, so.
And as I mentioned, too, when I talked about that project, it was from a grant, and that grant was for safety because we have been, we've been high with our pedestrian accidents.
Okay.
That's how we got the grant money.
Okay.
So several years ago, this council, prior city council, dealt with issues related, especially around Delaware and Superstition, some darkness issues. So you had tasked staff to look at some possible funding measures to be able to mitigate or reduce the risk of potential automobile accidents, and that led to this grant, and then it led to funding.
Okay, thank you.
Your honor.
Yes.
What, what qualifies, what studies do you do to qualify intersection for a traffic light? Seems like Southern Delaware seems like a real small, like three-point intersection.
Yes, it is a smaller intersection, and there is a specific study, it's called a warrant study. And I'm not a traffic engineer, so, so take this with a bit of a grain of assault, but I've worked with consultants, you know, that are traffic engineers. And what a warrant study involves is they look at seven or eight different things. And the, and the biggest two or three things are the types of crashes as well as the severity of crashes. So usually, if you meet the types of crashes, which are types of crashes that oftentimes result in severe, like, you know, T-bone type crashes, result in severe accidents. So we have had some severe accidents there as well as types. So it's not necessarily warranted per the traffic volume, but it met having to do with the severity of the accidents at that intersection.
Okay.
Your honor. We had a gentleman come, this probably been two or three months ago, complaining about Cortez and how the chip sealing project on there skipped over almost a quarter mile section. Appears that that's going to be picked up again this time.
Correct, correct.
Do we have measures in place to prevent that from happening in the future?
Yeah, it was a relearning point on, on staff's part where we made some field adjustments to add because we felt that we could pick up some more segments as part of that project. And we did that, but we didn't catch the disconnect between those segments. So we are definitely planning to get those extra segments here in this spring, spring 2026.
Thank you. And then I have a few questions here. The Old West Highway project, is there going to be enough room from the sidewalk to the, not the street side, but the shoulder side, to at least make it wide enough for equestrian use?
So we do have a large right-of-way along there, so I'm trying to remember back when I reviewed the plan. So some of the sidewalk curb is connected to, right to the edge of the pavement. Then there are some areas where the sidewalk meanders, disconnects from the edge of.
Yeah.
The pavement. So either way, there's going to be a lot of right-of-way shoulder space in between the sidewalk and edge of pavement, or if the sidewalk, sidewalk is up to the edge of pavement, you'll still have a lot of right-of-way space on the outside of the sidewalk.
Good. I've noticed recently that you've done quite a bit of shoulder work on Superstition from Goldfield back towards the roundabout here. Most of that was predominantly on the south side of the road. Is there any plans to do any of that kind of work on the north side? Specifically, there's some areas there where the brush hangs way over, almost to the edge of the road. Not just equestrian, but some, probably a few bikers have to actually go out into the road to get around some of the branches.
Yes, definitely. We'll take a look at that. That's oftentimes common vegetation maintenance that we doing, so Andy's with me here tonight. He's our street superintendent, so I think he'll take a note on that. We're out there with crews doing that quite often. And when it comes to the, the shoulder maintenance on Superstition Boulevard, we get a lot, a lot of traffic out there, a lot of that wheel traffic gets out on the edge of pavement and results in some, you know, steep drop-offs on the edge of the pavement. So that's what we're out there trying to mend, mend those pavement edge drop-off, pedos, we call it.
And you've done a wonderful job. Looks really, really good. Kudos.
Yeah, and definitely we'll pass that on to our crews, appreciate that.
One other quick question regarding like our main thoroughfares. For instance, Main Street, all the way through town, one crack sealing, staying on top of that, not letting it go one year, but, you know, hitting that every year. Same with Superstition, those are, you know, kind of our, our, our big site ones. And I noticed recently that you just did restriping on Lost Dutchman, and that looks really, really good. During the winter, I, we had a lot of complaints about the striping on Main Street. Our winter visitors have a hard time seeing those stripes. So I'd like to see that we stay or at least restripe that on a regular basis.
Yep, and, and councilmember Ross, you mentioned it, too, when you said crack seal, sometimes crack sealing, when you do that longitudinal joint in the middle of the road during the low glare in the evening or the morning, that, that stripe or that ribbon of the crack seal oftentimes looks like a stripe or may put it off to the side where you can't see the actual stripe. So, so I think that's what has happened on Apache Trail and what we usually try to watch out to for when we, when we crack seal. Also, a factor I think that's happening, too, is our fog seal that we used on Apache Trail. It has that shine to it. So again, in those low sun areas, all of a sudden, you have a lot of shine coming off your pavement, the striping gets drowned out. So, so in the daytime, the striping looks just fine. I go out there, I hear the complaints, go out there, I'm like, what's going on? They look just fine. But then when you go in there in the morning or at evening, which I did, like, yeah, the striping is hard, hard to see. So what I've done is actually changed up our fog seal that I look to use on our arterials where we have striping, a fog seal that has more of a flat dull, so it'll make more of our striping stand out. So, so the next thing we do for Apache Trail, I hope to get more of a dull surface on there and make that striping pop.
One last thing. The light at Delaware and Superstition, I've talked with you before on it. Just last week, 3:00 AM, the light was changing every eight seconds in either direction, whether there was a vehicle there or not. And then yesterday afternoon, no, Saturday afternoon, the light was changing every 10 seconds.
Without vehicles.
Without, you know, everybody on Superstition, you know, it changes green for traffic for Superstition, 10 seconds later, it changed, and there was nobody on Delaware fixing to turn. And it was staying green for Delaware a heck of a lot longer.
We'll take a look at that.
It's, it's out of sync bad. It seems like it's been out of sync ever since that building started being built.
Yeah, which oftentimes, sometimes development on the street, they knock out our detection and then we have a problems with getting the detection just right. So we will definitely take a look at that. Thanks for bringing that to our attention again.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, I'm going to do one little quick question. Looking at your map of what you're planning to do for the, I'll say improvements, it's very hard to see the streets and know what they are. And I'm going to say this one is a complaint that's come to me several times, and I know we've addressed it, but also in the same token, my wife bugs the heck me out on this, I don't go down the road anymore with her in my vehicle. But that's on 12th Street from Star to Cortez. I know they've gone in there and have filled a few of the holes, but when's that road going to be taken care of? Is that planned on?
I think we have it on our list for, for Chip Seal to redo it here in April for that portion of 12th.
Okay, because it's, it's bad. And I know when, if we ever get a bunch of rain, it's going to even get tremendously worse.
As I mentioned earlier, our key performance metric, we have more percentage of inventory of roads in bad shape than, so that's our room for improvement that we need to.
Well, I, like I said, I don't go down it anymore, keep my wife complaining.
And I will get you, I will get all of the council members a digital of this map. So as I mentioned, I'll get that digital copy to you so you could, you know, zoom it in and focus it out.
It's hard to see even, even the old wet street is there.
Problems of getting a bigger city, too. The maps get smaller and smaller.
Mayor says get that done first.
No, no. Well, my wife says get it done now. Okay, presentation, discussion, and procurement of city vehicles and equipment for fiscal year 2026. Shane?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, again. Shane Kiesel, your Public Works Director. So again, I wasn't kidding about asking you for permission to spend money. So we just talked about a lot of our street CIP projects, but now this is another type of capital, rolling capital. So in the budget, we have a lot of different vehicles listed for replacement as well as additional vehicles. We did provide a staff memo with your agenda, so in that memo, you'll actually see the different make, model of vehicles, equipment that we're looking to purchase, and also like the make and model condition and the current mileage of the vehicles that we're looking to replace. So I'm not going to replicate that information in the presentation, but I just wanted to point that out, that that's in your staff memo, if you're wondering, the make and model of the, of the vehicles that we're talking about. So I want to just specifically point out, so again, these are vehicles and equipment that you guys authorized as part of the fiscal year 26 budget. So we're just looking tonight, have a discussion, bringing back your attention to the vehicles that we're looking to move. forward to replace. Why are we before you in July, a lot of these vehicles have a lot of lead time. So our fleet, Mr. Gleave, our supervisor with fleet, he wants to make these orders so we can get these vehicles in and start getting them equipped and get them into our inventory so we can get staff. Some of these vehicles, a lot of these vehicles that are additions are ones to equip new staff that we have. So we want to make sure we equip our staff when we have our new new staff, if they need a vehicle. We are looking to come back in a couple of weeks for consent with with the permission to procure this. So again, this is just for presentation and information here tonight. So police department, oftentimes, police department is is our largest fleet, I guess, customer when it comes to amount of vehicles, replacement of vehicles. They're out there patrolling 24/7 with patrol cars. So yeah, it makes sense. Also, the patrol cars, we want to make sure that they have good cars out there to do their public safety job. So so this fiscal year, detectives, we have three replacement vehicles, and then administration, one replacement vehicle. In patrol, we have six additional vehicles. So that six additional is to equip additional police officers that have been hired not what we're planning to in fiscal year 26, but some additional staff that we hired in the last couple of years. And those additional vehicles are to replace some vehicles that we actually replaced last year or the year before, we decided to keep for that additional staff so we could spread out the new additional vehicles over time. So hopefully you're following me on that. We just kept some replaced vehicles in the past, used them for new staff, and now we're looking to replace those vehicles. Development Services, one additional vehicle for additional staff. And then the library, we have a replacement vehicle. Parks and Recreation, three replacement vehicles and three additional staff. Again, just like Parks and Recs or Public Works, city grows, parks grows, their additional needs grow with their with their vehicles. So so you can see the general fund spend, including the lighting equipment. So this isn't just for the vehicles, but for the lighting or accessories that come with the vehicles. And we're talking about some of the PD vehicles that come with a lot of additional expensive equipment, including radio equipment, et cetera, for those for those vehicles. We're looking at over 1.3, close to 1.35 million for general fund vehicles. Talking about highway user revenue funds, so HERF money, so Public Works, this money budgeted is in our HERF revenue, not general fund. So Public Works is looking at additional dump, I think it's a midsize work truck with a dump bed, and one additional John Deere midsize tractor with a with a Gannon blade box, along with a loader on the tractor. And then a replacement Craftco crack seal machine. We just talked a lot tonight about crack sealing. Our in-house staff does a lot of that, probably the bread and butter of maintenance, the best thing you could do as councilmember Cross mentioned of keeping those cracks filled, because our biggest fault for pavement is getting moisture in those cracks. So we try to keep those cracks filled as much as we can, preserves the life of of the pavement. So that new machine is critical to that purpose. So total HERF spend, including the additional accessories, is $370,000 for HERF. I think that is it. So just any questions? That's our recommendation, just pointing out different cooperative contracts. We're looking to purchase the vehicles, mainly a state contract, which we've used quite a bit in the past, also Sourcewell, which is a regional, national type of cooperative contract that has some cooperative contracts that we look to piggyback off with this equipment. So open it up for any questions, comments?
Yes.
Good question. Shane, it's a quick question, more curiosity. So we have that Arizona State Cooperative Contract, we're buying Fords through Santan Ford. Is it ever an opportunity to purchase them through Horn Ford, or must it be done through Santan?
It does, councilmember Eck, it doesn't have to go through Santan Ford. The state opens up for contractors every once in a while to get as part of their procurement group. And I understand Horn does get that information notice from the state about looking for vendors for vehicles. So they have that opportunity. In the past, we have separately put a bid solicitation out on the street, and Horn did bid, but the state contract did come in, still lower than our local folks. So we've been there, done that.
Yeah.
So just.
Good sales tax we're missing out on.
Yeah.
But I mean, as long as they've had the opportunity in the past to to bid or, you know, for the opportunity to firm this contract, yeah, that's important.
Yep, and we've looked at the sales tax too, and what happens is, is we're pretty small. So when the state goes out of a contract, their economy of scale is huge. So we save quite a bit of money on on these cooperative contracts. And we don't bid as often as we do with the larger cities, just because we don't have that scale as larger cities. So we take advantage of the larger cities doing that for us and then piggyback off of their cooperative contracts.
Good, thanks.
All right, a couple of quick questions. I noticed that we had a Ford Edge, a Ford Fusion, and a Ford Explorer, but they're all being upgraded to Ford Broncos. So are detectives need to be off-road more than on?
When it comes to detectives, diversity is key. We don't want to deploy similar vehicles all the time. A lot of people find out that, ooh, that's an Explorer, I know it's.
We're all three Ford Broncos. I'm pretty sure you just told me that there are going to be the same. So everybody watch out for the Ford Broncos.
So that's one of the reasons, but then also price.
A white too.
Price too.
Well, yeah, because I noticed that those are 2025s. Just for, just to point out, I'm pretty sure that the 2015 Ford Fusion and the 2018 Ford Explorer don't both have exactly the same 105,000, 148 miles. So one of those two has got to be different. I'm pretty sure they're not the same. But did you guys, did you guys get a really good deal? Because I noticed that the only thing you're buying in 2024 models are the six patrol cars. Everything else is a 25, but we're buying, are these are these new, or are they used when I see 2024 on the Explorers?
They are all new. And, you know, I could maybe ask Brian to step up here, our supervisor, if, you know, just to validate what I said. They are, they are new, and I think we got the deals, you know, if it fell in a 24-year or 25-year.
So they didn't have any 24 Broncos?
Councilmember, Mayor Councilmember, Brian, Fleet Department, that was probably my fault. I put 24 instead of 25. A lot of times when I get the quotes on these, they're 24. And then by the time we move into the new year and we receive the vehicles, they're 25, 26. So that was probably my fault. I looked at our quotes and they said 24, so that's what I put on the sheet. So that'd be my.
So they're all new?
Correct. All new.
And they're all.
Probably going to be 25, 26 by the time we get them.
Okay. I'm just kind of curious why we were getting an older model.
Yeah.
Leftovers.
Yeah, I have one question. Regarding the mini excavator, how many is it? Is it a real small one, or is it midsize? Because it seems like a waste of money to go with the smallest thing out there.
Where did you see the mini excavator? I'm sorry. That's in. Was that something else? We don't, we don't recall any mini excavator in the budget, and I think Brian figured it's not, unless you saw like our John Deere tractor here.
Yeah, no, okay.
If you can find it.
Yeah.
We're not seeing it here.
I must have been something else I had looked at, sorry.
Yep, no problem.
Yeah, if you see it. Yeah, I see it real quick. Anyone else? Yes?
Yeah, I have a question for either you or Bryant, and it's not directly, it's related to this, it's indirectly. But a while back, I had somebody ask me a question about when the city sells vehicles, when you get the money, does it go back into the general fund? Or does, how, you know, and I didn't want to.
Yes, councilmember, it does, yeah. So when we sell a vehicle, we know that it was paid out of general fund. So when we sell it, those salvage revenues go back to it. Same with HERF. We know that it was purchased out of HERF, goes back.
Oh, okay. So if it came from HERF fund, that goes back to the state then?
Well, it goes back to.
Oh, our money in the HERF fund. Okay, gotcha. Thank you.
The only thing that might go back to the state are some grant-funded equipment, like street sweepers that we got through a grant. The federal highways, ADOT has a requirement for a portion of any salvage value we have for disposing of that type of equipment.
Anyone else?
Your honor?
Yes?
Sorry, Shane, it's with the water district tomorrow night. They have a mini excavator in there.
Okay, there it came from.
I knew I'd read it.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Okay, I will adjourn this meeting. Thank you.